We will call the meeting to order. Start off with board issues. Go around the board. Commissioner Holly?
And whose turn is it? Three minutes?
It is...
Okay, just wanted to make sure that she knew. And then, I don't know what the weather's like at you guys' house. It's snowing at my house.
Okay.
So I would like, if possible, if we can just do the things that have to get done tonight, because I need to get on the road, because I have a very treacherous driveway. And if we wait too long, I'm not going to make it.
That's crazy.
I will, um...
What'd you say?
Oh, I just said that's crazy. I didn't know it was snowing anywhere. Now, sorry.
No?
I didn't mean to interrupt. I just like, I believe you. That's nuts, dude.
You didn't have any, I mean, it was snowing when I drove in here.
Hell, if it's snowing. Yeah, I get nothing. If it's snowing at your place, yeah, that's okay. Um, I can strike the mission statement. We'll send that out by email to everybody. I'll just ask that nobody respond to all. And we'll discuss that to next month, so we'll push that to next month. Um, anything else we can, anybody who can push or...
The employee manual?
Shh.
I would, I read pages of it.
Okay.
So I would absolutely push that.
Next month?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else we can push to next month?
Do we?
Which one? Thomas?
Are you going to bid the next meeting? No matter what? Don't know? Not happening? Okay. So, that's the only thing with the employee manual, I guess. If it's the director that worked on this, I'm going to be here. I hope there's no bugaboo as they trip us out. You, are you confident enough in?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Okay, perfect. Okay.
I can go in and make changes, so.
Awesome.
As long as, like, somebody gets past me on the computer.
Perfect, okay. Perfect.
All right. Anything else?
No, those are the only issues.
All right. Commissioner Hart, Commissioner Shingleton?
Um, have we extended the offer, or can we extend the offer to the foundation to have a standing place on the agenda? As opposed to, if it's wanted, as opposed to?
It would make sense.
Okay. It would be, it would be nice.
Are there any objections?
I may not.
Why don't we put the foundation in, say, right before, right in between approval minutes and voucher review? We'll make that change next month for the agenda. That way they have a regular spot in the agenda. All right. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Hoffmann?
Nothing.
All right. I have something, a board issue. And it has to go back with a question you just asked. So Steve and I have been talking about this, looking at financials and everything else. The director, and Light of everything, want to do that? Okay. Read this into public minutes. This is to North Whibley Pool Park and Recreation District Board of Commissioners from Steve McCaslin, our executive director. Commissioners, as you know, I had built the 2018 budget based on my tenure here ending at the end of April 2018, unless there was a change in the financial situation for the district. And what I consider to be the best financial interest of the district, I am announcing my resignation effective 31 March 2018. There have been some unexpected costs that have already exceeded the budget for the year, and the savings in my early departure, along with other financial adjustments made, will help the district remain financially viable through the levy vote and 2018. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the district. Sincerely, Steve McCaslin. Now, Steve's contract calls for 30 days notice from either party. Under normal circumstances, we are not in normal circumstances. Is there an objection for the board with him resigning before his 30 days?
I absolutely hate that this is where we're at, but nothing.
Okay. And effective 31 March. Steve, thank you very much for all you've done. And I know we'll continue to do for the district. One of the things that Steve put together for us, I'll hand this out real quick so you all can look at it, is not only what the savings will come from his resignation, but the scale down from normal work, unfortunately, that is going to happen. Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Maintenance director. Obviously, we're not running a full-time pool. We're shut down as we can be. To the point where Matt and Steve have unplugged and unscrewed light bulbs that would normally be on. The temperature on the pool deck right now is currently 53 degrees. Yeah, it's a little chilly out there, but that's, that's the cost of not having money. You know, and so the pool doesn't have hot water in it, and, you know. So we're about as bare bones as we can be. And as such, there is now not a whole lot for our maintenance director to do. We'll talk about succession planning later on. But one of the things is bringing his hours down. Normally, just through operational, day-to-day operations. It just, unfortunately, it doesn't viably, in the long term, make sense for us to keep somebody on full-time. I'm sorry, Matt. I know you understand, but still. And so, given him about, I think we, when we looked at this mid-April, winding down for the next 30 days, shutting things down so we can operate, and he can operate on eight hours a week. Which, yeah, that's, eight hours a week, that's not a lot of time here. But to get it to where he can come in and maintain the chlorine on the pool for the monthly test calls, and get called again in the test, the pool test, the P...
Oh, you mean if the health department cuts it?
Yeah.
Oh, they just call us and...
Okay. But to maintain the pool, the pool chlorine and pH levels, to make sure that the plumbing is the way it's supposed to be, the HVAC's still working and everything else, you'd be able to do that eight hours a week. So that, should we start to stand back up, we don't have to go, you know, it's not going to kill us too much.
How soon would we drop on these hours here and then?
About 30 days.
It would begin, to finish, the final things that we're doing to get to a point where it's basically just facility upkeep. And then him assuming, the parts of my job that he's going to assume, will run his current through 15 April, and then after that it will come down to eight hours a week. Beginning 16 April.
Is that enough time for you on everything?
It would have to be.
Have you closed on your house yet, or?
Can we ask that, sorry, since we're chiming in and having a conversation, if you feel like it's not, you'll definitely bring that to us, right? I mean, okay, I mean, it's a matter of, I mean, we know we need, we know we need to cut back, but we also know that we need to maintain things. And so where there is an incompatibility, we need to know about it. I think we all trust you, but, but part of that is we need to know the truth. As opposed to, yeah, I'm busting myself here to get these things done. And, and it does look a whole lot like eight hours. I'm sorry.
No, 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 no.
I'm trying, I just, it's like, we need to know for, we need to know and we need to be, to do the right thing. So, and we're going to depend, I know I depend on, would depend on you to tell us that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
What we have in front of us is the said projected savings. With Steve leaving at the end of this month, and then Matt being cut down next month. The savings to our limited budget is $30,000, which is significant, considering we're on a shoestring budget. So, first off, I want to thank you both for all you've done. And Matt, I know this is easy, and, but thank you. Discussion from the commission. This was basically, Steve, did you want to, did I forget to add something here?
No, but I would like, make a short little comment. The decision on me leaving a month early is based on some overrunning stuff. And this is where we can say, it's $5,500, that's still $5,500 that is saved. Matt and I have been discussing since probably the end of January. And when we started looking at what the things we were doing according to the maintenance plan, that as we reach a certain point, it's, there's not 30 hours worth of work in this week anymore. So, the top line there, me, that's, that's a function of leaving early and saving $5,500. The second line was never meant to be part of that. This would have occurred anyway. We've been talking about this since end of January, when we saw the end of the high school swim season coming in the middle of February. So, I wanted to make sure that was clear in there, that...
Thank you.
I have a couple.
Correct.
Question, et cetera. You know, one of them's going to be with the, with the pass-down model, or whatever that is. And even though we're closed, how much time do we expect that being interim director, or whatever it would be? So that's one question. Another question is, you know, I think all the commissioners are aware that we're an exempt employer, as far as unemployment securities go. And are we going to be paying out 60% of people's wages for doing nothing? And, and is it better to possibly, you know, for, when I say doing nothing, by them not being here? So that's something maybe we need to look at as well.
So what you're saying is?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the question is.
If, if with the director having to resign because of the budget, or with the maintenance director having his hours cut in half, are they eligible for unemployment? Being that we're not an exempt employer?
I have, I will tell you that I have no intention of doing it. I've been unemployed before, and I did not do it. And I have no intention of doing it now. So, I will go find a job, I will go do something, I will figure out how to pay my bills, but I don't have an intention of living on unemployment.
I mean, I think that's gracious. I don't know if we could hold you to that, but that is, that's encouraging.
But do you pick us a point where it's put on the table or not? But I don't think it's going to get to that point.
That was just a question I had, and we're an exempt employer, and that comes straight out of our budget.
Could you, I don't think I know, does exempt employer mean that we have to pay?
Correct.
Yes.
We do not.
All of someone's...
We do not, but because, because we're a government-type agency, and it's construed that we would have a relative...
So there's two ways, there's two ways unemployment works, right? If you're paying every month.
Right.
Or you do it the way we do, which is exempt, and if they come back...
Except for paying in unemployment insurance, right?
And since we don't pay every month, right? We get charged a certain percentage, should they come back, and should an employee leave here and come back and claim unemployment. So, that's, that's where we're at. Yes. And there's nothing we can...
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
If we, so this is something we looked at over the past couple of years, because we were trying, it was really, for a lot of us, it was like, we, like, what is this? Where is this going? So, anyway, the thing is, is basically what we did was, if you will, took the risk because of our employment, because of our employment situation. We took the risk, instead of paying a large amount every month to the state, that we take the risk that unemployment claims will not come to us, and that we will save money that way. It is a, it is a frugal measure on the district's part, that we have made a decision to do so. That's why it is the way that it is. Sorry if that was TMI, but...
No, I...
No, and on what Wendy said there, even at a point in time where, you know, usually you can only get unemployment for six months. During the height of the recession there, that was extended out to where you could apply for 24 months or 36 months. And the district was, was paying that for multiple employees there. And the district went out to the state unemployment securities department, and they compared the two. And even though we were paying out quite a few employees, we were still money ahead of where we would have been paying into the insurance. Now, hindsight being 2020, a closed district, I don't know that any of us weighed that as an option.
No.
All right. So, that's all I've got for this one. Looking at the maintenance director. He's a contract employee, so that would take a board motion for us to do that.
Oh, to accept this? Mr. Chair, I propose that we accept the plan as set forth, as we discussed as set forth in this document. And also that we actually, I would like part of that to be a thank you to Mr. McCaslin for his behavior as our director. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Discussion.
So we, sorry, I'll go first, since we're going to start somewhere. So we know that we can, that we can do this legally?
Do what?
That we can, I mean, what I see here is an hourly, is that we're converting our main instructor to an hourly employee effectively. And we know that legally we can do that. Okay, I just, okay.
Good question.
And I guess the secondary question is, in terms of health insurance, so we're talking about wages here, and I'm, I'm not, I don't want to get into personal things, but I...
Insurance is going, you don't have to pay it.
Okay.
It'll run through April.
Okay.
It'll run through April, fortunately it won't have.
These were discussions that the maintenance director and I have had over the last month and a half, or more. These have been, these have been pretty hard discussions.
Sure. And I'm, and I'm sorry, I'm really sorry to hear that. I know we don't have any other choices, but I'm really sorry to hear that. I think, you know, that's...
When you said, when you look at the number here, you could choose, the board could choose to continue it, but my, the way we just, we approached it was, once we came, he was at 30 hours a week.
Anything under 20.
There's no...
There's no requirement to do it. And that would be a decision that the board wants to make a change on. And it would change about $6,000 from this 30, it would lower it to about 24, 25, roughly.
It seems to me that we would have to get the employee back to open enrollment period, unless there's some way to purchase insurance that I don't know of.
He, well, right now he's covered through end of April.
Yeah.
Because the pay, insurance is paid a month in advance.
But the open enrollment's not until next January, right?
I think it's like November. This would be something that Joanne would be able to do, would just be to re, probably we're in a, within a window, if the board chose to, to say, no, let's keep that, then it would be probably just a call, a phone call. Because it's, I mean, this was only done like in the last couple of days, that the call was made to the insurance company. This was not, this was thought out and delayed as long as I felt I could delay it. Because the bill was due, 15th of August, but it was done anyway. But that's a, that's a board decision. The presentation here is, at the end of April, the medical coverage ceases. If the board chooses differently, then it'll just affect the bottom line there. That's the only, it's, it's a number at that point. When you're looking at savings, it's a number. I don't mean to make it's a number.
Even, even though I see why we're here, I, I would not feel comfortable voting for that unless, unless I seen proof that the employee could buy insurance on his own. Because I think, my understanding with the enrollment periods is that you can't, that he would be unable to buy...
If there's a change, if there's a change in employment, he can, yes. If there's a change in employment, he will go.
He will also, it's going to cost us 20, that's a lot. Same thing that we had to do for Coach, from Coach Club. He will get a letter from, oh my God, I had that name on my, Cobra.
Okay. I'm glad you knew that. I didn't have to get that.
Yeah, he'll get a letter from them, it'll be offered to him that way. Cobra is way more expensive than it needs to be, but he'll at least have that option. And if he doesn't have coverage, I mean, it's really, if you, there are people out there that'll do it, either in or out of the exchange.
That would make me feel better.
Mr. Chair, can, can we stay that part of the conversation for the moment? I'd like to know more, but I actually don't feel comfortable that we're talking about personal things in a public meeting. Like, I understand why we're talking about this topic, but I also feel super uncomfortable. And, and so I don't know if, if you, or me, or someone else could go have, I, I'm not saying that you guys haven't done your due diligence, I'd just like to understand it better, or have someone from the board understand it better, to see if there's, again, there are probably no easy solutions, but I just feel really uncomfortable. I feel really uncomfortable with this. And so I'd like to give it, I'd like to give that portion of this, I would not change the motion, and give this portion of it some more time for consideration by the board. Or, or at least, at least, maybe it's my edification, maybe that's what it is.
So not change the motion?
Meaning don't change it to include anything else, leave it as is.
Which, which means it'll end as of the 30th of April, but she wants to have the option to go back and discuss it further.
So perhaps it's really me just learning more, and I'm not trying to make this painful for anybody, but I'm uncomfortable talking about this on a recorder.
Yep.
And I think, isn't that one of the things, that you go into executive sessions when you're talking about compensation?
You may.
I thought that was one of the...
You may.
You may. And you have to make a decision, but if we want to talk about it, it should be done in an executive session.
You may.
You may.
You're not required.
And then another question, isn't it would be a very brief answer, I would think? But I think any contractual changes are supposed to, they're ran by our lawyer, aren't they? Just to make sure that we're not stepping on something that we don't see?
They, we can run this by the lawyer, but...
You don't have to.
It's changing the hours, but we can definitely do that.
That's fine. That'll be more than either of you.
Exactly.
We're saving money. I think, given that the people affected are on board with it, I think we, we...
Yeah, we've already discussed this, we've already figured it all out. All y'all have to do is, is agree on the paper in front of you.
I would just like to express my thanks for the graciousness of the employees here that have made sacrifices for the good of the pool. And I, I think we all very much appreciate them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against?
Nay.
So if we don't have a unanimous, we'll have to take a roll call vote. Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Hart?
Aye.
Commissioner Shingleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Nay.
Commissioner Merrill votes aye. It is four to one. Do I have it? Motion passes. Agenda changes.
I know, I said I wanted to change, I have one really quick one. I would like for, to add an old business to change the May meeting date.
May meeting date.
It's the fourth Thursday, I want it to be the third Thursday.
To the 17th, so...
It doesn't conflict with anybody else's schedule, but...
Be the 24th.
So moving...
It is the 24th.
Currently, yes. May 24th to the 17th.
Yes. I think it's old business because the schedule is old.
Any further questions, moving the May meeting to the 17th?
Oh, so we're discussing it now?
Is that it?
I could have been in board issues, so...
Oh, okay.
Either way, whatever.
It was just an agenda change. I was adding it to the agenda.
You were adding it, you want to add it to unfinished business?
Yes. Sorry, it's a little busy.
No, we'll do the unfinished business, so date change. All right?
Yes.
Any further agenda changes? No further agenda changes. Before I go into public comment, if I recognize the foundation in between approvals of minutes and voucher review, will that be sufficient? Or would you like to make public comment?
Small, but I don't know.
So for public comment, we recognize Ms. Julie Lee.
I've been on for three weeks, as everyone knows. I'm back and ready to get back to work. I just want to say, while I was gone, it's amazing that checks are still coming. I mean, it was just a great feeling to come back and see a stack full of checks to the foundation. And I just wanted to read this one little note. And it said, "Thank you for doing everything you're doing for our community. Let's bring back our pool. My kids need swimming lessons. Thank you, Kim." But really, that's why we're doing this. It's, I posted a thing on the foundation page. It's our community, it's our problem, and I'm glad to be back. And the things that are on our agenda are, we have a community garage sale sponsored by a nursing home, and they will start collecting donations from all over town, and they will be running it. We have change for the, change for the pool, which is going to happen in all of our elementary schools. Kids are going to compete and raise money. We have, I have a meeting with Cynthia Mason, who runs the music festival. She's a friend of mine also, and I didn't even realize, at first I didn't even think about it, and, or into her book. Short-term things and long-term things, you know, my hands are a little tied. I don't have a 501(c)(3) in hand, I have the letter that the IRS is working on it. So I'm working slowly for short-term things that I can do legally. And I'm also positioning this foundation for long-term sustainability to this district. And, I mean, if there was ever incentive to get busy and work, this meeting, great motivator, you know? So if we can line ourselves up as a foundation with a couple of big events, and we always get a percentage, and we work with those things, we'll be set for long-term. I just know we have a short-term crisis, and I do have a professional writer that's working behind the scenes, and he's doing great things for us. And the grant writing will commence, and, but, you know, I can't turn the grants in until I have the, but he's taken a lot of burden off me, and that's been great. So, all things, it's kind of like, you know, we hurried up and now wait. Hurry up, wait, and so I, I wish I could say, I could go to work and do these things, but legally, I can't even run the change for the schools without that official document. So, I'm being patient. I wish I could say we can start immediately, but me being gone didn't really matter because I don't have it in hand.
Thank you.
So, we're still working.
Thank you very much. All right, approval minutes, we don't have any to review this month, I will say. And I'm going to go back and with Julie's assistance, I'm going to do commissioner's because I'm pretty sure that we're not going to get those from them. So I will do those. One, two, three, four, plus the special meeting. So if we can all try to get those in in the next two months, so we can try to get caught up, that would be awesome. Thank you very much. Foundation, Julie? I'm so sorry.
Sorry.
No, 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 go right ahead. Did you want to say anything else? Are you good?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay.
I didn't want to say this, our website is, it's supposed to be up and running, but I've heard there's a small glitch between GoDabi and Google. We're working on it. We do have a Facebook presence, which is seemingly helping. And we all have official emails tied to our website. Hopefully this, this technical stuff, I, I mean, people smarter than me are on it. And Whibley Tech Solutions, great guys, and they've offered to help us. So now that I'm back, I'm going to say, here. Let's have a look, find people that want to help, that are great in this community. Because I just want to say, this community has bent over backwards. Including our mayor, who I have a meeting with. So, and he's part of Whibley Foundation, and he and his wife did reach out to me to the chamber lunch, and they want to help. I just have to start connecting all these things.
Thank you very much. Voucher review.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve District Vouchers 7913 through 7932, the amount of $12,117.2, and get payroll transfers from M&amp;O account to payroll account in the amount of $10,319.84.
Should we have a motion to approve vouchers 7913 through 7932? And the M&amp;O accounts, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
It's the, I guess it was like a $5,000, that's from when we were still heating the pool, right?
Like, about the, yes, yeah, because that covered, that was, that's basically a January bill.
Okay, that's, I assumed that, so, okay. I have no other questions.
And since you asked about the January bill on the gas, we'll also get partial for February, correct?
Yeah, about 10 days worth.
10 days, and then we shut it down about the 14th.
Seven, uh, 17th.
17th, so February 17th.
After the last day of swim, I turned off the boiler and turned off the pump.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Further questions? Commissioner Hart?
Those were my questions.
Commissioner Shingleton?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Hofmeyer? No further questions?
All in favor of approving vouchers, vouchers, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it? Vouchers are approved. Next are the committee reports. Clover Valley Committee.
They didn't meet, they didn't meet during this period. They met last period.
Okay.
The only thing would be in this, you'll see if you saw the staff report, we did get the MOU signed with the county for the money they're going to donate for the costs out there. I don't have the money yet, but I do have a signed MOU. And the intent, like I said in there, is I'll park that into one of the little sub-accounts, and when a bill comes in, I'll transfer, or who? Matt will now. Transfer it out, and it'll go back in the MNO to pay the bill. So there's accountability for, yes, we spent the money you gave us on the things you asked us to spend.
I do know of several businesses that are really looking forward to advertising out there if we can get that together, so that would be encouraging as well.
Community Outreach User Group Committee.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Well, we've been working on our vision statement, and our vision is to reopen the pool by increasing community awareness and involvement, and supporting any and all fundraising efforts. Particularly, you know, we want to work with the foundation. We feel dependent on the foundation. And, and we want to know that we appreciate you and all of your work very much, and that, you know, we want to help. And we did, you know, we, we wanted to have like a card ready for the Holland happening. And so we got this card, and what we decided to do is first put it up on like Facebook, you know, on social media, which will cost nothing. And then, you know, when we get every detail worked out, we will, we will have some of these printed up. We can get them printed up very reasonably. And that is a further discussion. But, and I would like to thank Julie for, you know, her help in designing this. Can I? I think that's pretty much what I have to report.
Okay. Well, thank you. Strategic plan to reopen the pool. We met last month. And Steve came up and took a look at a couple of options for us. The biggest thing, and it's hard to point out, I know Steve has some discussions with MWR and so on. And when we have these discussions with people, there's no part-time opening. Once you throw the switch to open that pool for the pump, for the heat, for the electrical, it's a full-time throw the switch. You can't part-time throw the switch to heat the pool. And you can't part-time, you know, throw the switch to circulate the water and do the chemicals. So unfortunately, costs are pretty, without, you know, the significant cost to overhead, the costs are pretty consistent. And so what we did is we put together a concept of operations. That's in front of you now. This is, this truly is a starting point. That's what we needed to get to. And to look at the bare bones, what does it take to open the doors and get things going? And to open the doors, like I said, the air temperature on the pool deck right now is 53 degrees. That affects the water. The moisture and humidity in the air on the pool deck affects the temperature of the water. There are so many things that affect the temperature of the water. We get people in here two days a week or four days a week. That affects the temperature of the water. So a lot of the, the costs are going to unfortunately fluctuate. There's a lot of unknowns because we haven't opened the pool in the past two to four days a week. We don't have historical data to go back and look at. That's a good thing. It's a bad thing now, but it's a good thing that we've never had to do that in the past. So built on the assumptions, we looked at a four-day and a two-day. For the purpose, and just for the purpose of discussion, it's a Thursday through Sunday, two days during the week, two days on the, days on the weekend. That doesn't mean that's what we've got to look at in the long run. It doesn't mean that that's the only way. Obviously, this is a foundation, something to go from. Thursday to Friday, the weekdays, open at 05:30 to 18:30. And then Fridays, we'll have open swim going until 19:30. Saturdays and Sundays open at 10:00. And the programming on the weekends run back-to-back. It's a full schedule from 10:00 until 1600. What's not reflected here are Oak Harbor High School swims in the fall for the girls, and in the winter for the boys, and the BHBC swim programs. That's the Blue Herring Swim Club, the SCUBA, the Skagit Valley College folks, the Oak Harbor School District. It's Oak Harbor Elementary School. I think it's the only school that was currently in here right now. Special Olympics.
Home Connections too.
Public Connection, Home Connections, thank you very much. Special Olympics isn't in here, and Northwoodby Fire and Rescue comes down to do their initial training for their Marine Rescue Unit folks in the pool before they go out and do their water swim. So those are built in here, because those are different programs that, I don't know if they'll be able to fit in the time swats. How do we work those in? You know, that's for further discussion. But they can be added in a modular, everything, you know, as we've done in the past. It's a block, and we just figure out where are we going to get that block?
What's the name in there?
Excuse me?
What's the name?
They're, they're on the schedule. The MWR, I mean, yeah, I mean, the PRTs are, yeah, the PRTs are, MWR, they would be whatever.
So the answer is yes, PRTs are on there, but there's not a block for the Navy. We've never given them a block, and we will. Unless we all vote to do that. The assumptions here are the revenue derived from the fundraising and other sources will be used to replace lost levy revenue. That's a huge assumption right there, especially since we don't even have a 501(c)(3) right now. And when we put this together, we didn't look at anything realistically until after Labor Day. To open the pool in the next two months is not going to happen. We're just not going to have the funds to do it. We're not going, we can't expect the foundation to get the funds to cover that. When we talked to, when Steve talked to MWR, you were pretty blunt and told them.
I told them if they wanted to do what they want to do, that a couple hours a week, it's $300,000. A little over, but that's rounded.
And the point there is not, hey, we're trying to highball the Navy, because we know they don't have the funds either, but that it's the same whether you open it for one group for a couple hours, or for a couple groups for a lot of hours. It costs the same to function and operate the pool. There's no pie in the sky. We can turn it off for a couple hours here and turn it on here. So the cost is the same, and the money's got to come in somewhere. And to assume that we're going to get user revenue to fund operations, that's why we have an MNO levy, that's why we have the levy we have, because we're not built to operate on user revenue. Matter of fact, there's no district that does that, not even Snohomish, which is owned by the school district. So, and they've got a WOW facility. So this is what we put together. It's a starting point for us to look at in the future going out. I think everybody got this in their email. So hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it. If not, please take it home this month and look at it in the light of keeping this short. I'm not going to go through each page and do depth by PowerPoint. I don't believe in it. We're grown adults.
Can I get a copy of that somehow?
Yes, you may. Steve, could you please send a copy electronically? There we go. And I, I will, either myself or somebody here will electronically send you a copy.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And if anybody else would like a copy, please let us know. So if you guys can go home and look at this, please, questions, comments, ideas, anything you think that, as you look at it, please bring, either send myself or Commissioner Hart and an email separately, so that we're not having a group discussion, and we can bring it up on our next committee meeting. We will do so, and then we'll discuss it in depth, hopefully, next month after everybody's had a chance to review.
Can I send it to the two of you together?
And just say, don't, don't reply? Yes, ma'am. As long as we're not having this discussion, yes?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am? Any other questions or comments again, before we move on to the next bit?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Just one thing that, I have lots of questions about it, but I will save those for the group discussion. But in one place in the document, it says 81 degrees, and another place in the document, it says 83 degrees. It would just make, consistency would be helpful.
And the suggestion there was, is there a significant, we as a board voted to change it to 83?
Correct.
And it would be considerable savings for us to move that to 81. So that, the reason we looked at that is, remind me again, it was like eight?
Raising it from 82 to 83, after looking at it for a year, was roughly a thousand a month.
So.
But when we were running it at 78 for the high school swim team and the other swim team, we weren't seeing a linear drop in cost of gas.
Down. It's $1,000. The heating.
Yeah, it didn't come down more than a thousand a month.
It did not.
It did not. Yeah, I didn't think it was going to be linear, at least not $5,000 less a month, because that'd be almost a whole payment. But it did not.
It did not.
And it, that's even with the lower beta load, which affect, is one of the factors that affects how much the boiler has to work.
At that, you wonder if it's almost more, maybe it has as much to do with the speed that the water circulates as opposed to the amount of gas you're putting to it, maybe.
So to Commissioner Shingleton's point, I can correct that to have it consistent. If you guys want to tell me what number you want, the number in there for boiler is based on 83.
Well, it's all a proposal, right?
Right, yes.
It, it, the thing that I was unsure of was I read 81 in one place and 83 in the, in the, in the budget part of it. And I was just trying to understand which one we were saying, because, well, it's just clarify the proposal, that's all. I mean, it would be helpful.
Okay.
I tried to do it at 81, but did the pricing as if it was full, like nothing changed, because we only saw a thousand going down.
And just something that speaks to that, that says, this is a working assumption, or this is this, not this, as it says back in, like, just something so we understand, and we don't think it's a typo, or, oh, I only saw 83. Oh, I only saw 81. Just clarification, that's all. That's, that's, that's all I'm asking for.
Okay. Anything else?
Not, not at this time.
Okay. All right, no further discussion on that. We'll move to action item review. Director?
They're all in the, my comment, my staff report. So I had a couple of them in there, and I answered them in the staff report.
Any questions to the staff report? Commissioner Shingleton?
No, I mean, we, I probably have staff report questions, but we'll, we'll ask them when we get to staff reports.
Okay. Commissioner Hofmeyer? Mr. Hart? Nothing for Commissioner Holly, nothing for me. All right. District sponsorship policy. Commissioner Shingleton?
So, be clear, it's a draft. I don't know if you caught that part. But, oh, so I, I kind of went back and forth on this. So you didn't get it earlier, because I realized I was probably over, I, I overdid it. And it was one of those things where it was like four pages initially, and then I was like, this is dumb. And, and so the idea is to keep it simple for the, for present, because it wasn't. And I know we talked about the difference between a sponsorship policy and an advertising policy. This is intended to be an advertising policy, because right now, that's really in the span of our control. And so what I would just ask folks to do is, since you just got it, I don't expect that anybody has, you know, oh, look, I read it in the three minutes, you know, where you were talking last time, Wendy. Not so much. But if you could look at it, I know, stop, just stop. At least I don't only amuse myself. But look at it and, and let me know if there's anything that you have. If people could, could let me know if they have any feedback, we can get you a copy as well. I, I'm not sure that at this point, because like, again, I like, I thought about it, and then I thought, like, I just kept like second guessing it, and then I was like, no. If we want, when, whenever the time is that we want to look at sponsorships, our advertising policy would apply and be referenced in there. But really, we need an advertising policy so that we can start doing the kinds of things that, that you brought up earlier. So, and, you know, as well as, I mean, there, I'm sure there are other opportunities. Anyway, so if folks, unless there's a different timeline, if, if within the next two weeks, y'all could give me any feedback. And I know that the format is probably not according to.
It'd just get put into a resolution format, is all that would happen.
Okay. And if you have any feedback, it's, you know, should, should you have the time, I, it would be greatly appreciated.
Few more working days, so I.
And I, I just, I, we hadn't actually had the discussion, so I went, I went with Northwoodby Pool Park and Recreation District, and, and used that as a acronym. And additionally, I used the Oxford comma, because, well, that's the right thing to do.
What's an Oxford comma?
It's the comma before and. Oh, yeah, also known as a serial comma. You're welcome, everyone who needed an English lesson for today. Sorry. Absolutely, it's an Oxford comma. Sorry.
It looks weird without it there.
One thing, it's like in 1.2 exclusions, you didn't say who is going to determine things that are, you know, obscene, indecent, or discriminatory.
And I think there is additionally a process, and part of, since, since I wasn't sure of what the current situation was, I didn't want to say this person will determine, these can be approved by this person. I, I think wherever possible, I put district. But I will take that part of it. But again, if you could read it more thoroughly, and within the next two weeks. I guess my assumption now would be, if, take two weeks to look at it, get it back to me, unless somebody thinks that we need to move more quickly on that. Okay, so I, I took your piece of feedback, but individually might be easier, as people can digest the information. Don't give me that look. Okay, I just, oh, my gosh.
Here's what, no, here's what I think, is that it's either going to be the director, whoever's sitting in that chair, and/or the Board of Commissioners. And it's like, I don't know if we all sort of kind of agree, if we have kind of consensus, that's good to know. I kind of think it should be the director.
I agree.
And if we, if the Board of Commissioners says, oh, my God, I can't believe you let him do this, you know, then the Board should be able to correct that. So that's what I think, is it should be both.
Well, if we're, if we're going to launch in the discussion, though, if that's the case, by the time we knew about it, it'd be too late. So you kind of have to accept one or the other, or a, here's all the stuff we approved. Again, I tried to be generic and say districts, so that we could determine what the procedure was, separate from the policy.
Oh, okay. Got it. Now I understand what you're saying.
So our ARVs can advertise out there, but only if they're hats facing the right direction?
All right.
Way too soon. Well, it's drawn on ARVs.
Policy, not procedure, got it.
Poor pilot, to hope they're out of trouble.
No.
No?
All right, thank you. So we'll have comments back to Commissioner Shingleton in two weeks. Two weeks, two weeks. All right, Employee Manual, we're moved to next month. Succession planning, if we could look at that real quick.
And I would like to say on that, it's sort of about the employee manual, I don't think this should be an appendix to the employee manual, the thing at the back.
Okay.
I think mainly because I think it's, it is personality dependent. I think mainly because, I think it's, it is personality dependent, because I've seen different people in different jobs, and there's ones that I would trust to do certain things, and, you know. And others, no one who I would give that job to, just saying. So I love that there's this list, and I think there should always be a list that the director should keep for he gets hit by a bus, and then he knows who in his organization he would trust to do those things. So I just don't think it should be a, a part of the employee handbook that's kind of permanent, and doesn't, doesn't get changed often enough. It should be more fluid, in other words.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. So, we can't make it a resolution, because then it's binding?
Correct.
So, we're making a standalone document to be used as needed, or...
Yeah.
With, to be used as needed with board oversight? Because obviously, we have oversight, but...
Yeah, I, I actually agree, I didn't, I did this, because last month, we talked about making, putting it into the manual. But I think that whoever sits in this debt, in this chair right here, probably should pull this out of a binder that's marked, "Succession planning," or whatever.
Yeah.
Like a pass down log that we're used to, and go, you know, after a couple of months on the job, they should have a feel for what their people's capabilities are, and be able to go, "Okay, I'm going to move this here, this here," or what, make whatever changes they feel they need to make.
Exactly.
And then, then they can go, "Hey, commissioners, I've made these changes based on my assessment of the skill level of my, or the, I'm sorry, skill level, but the, the best capabilities of my staff to do the job."
I wonder if it would be wise to put an expiration date on it, too, just so it's not misconstrued down the road?
Or perhaps a, to be, you know, review, annual review, and when it's due, basically, right? Or something, at, at a minimum annually, but, but have that on the document when it's due for review.
It'd be reviewed annually with the budget. It's very challenging, birds wants to...
Oh, no, let's, let's not do it with the budget. Let's do it, propose to the budget. So we do the budget in November, and then this can be like April or May.
There you go.
So when you're, when you're cliff diving in Mexico in the summer, and you, you know...
Yeah, and I dive.
Pancake.
That's a lot better than the past. I know a way better way than the past.
That's a mental picture, I just didn't need it.
I know.
So, questions, comments, concerns about the coverage of the executive director's duties in his or her absence?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
The one thing that I believe that we will need is, and I don't have the wording in front of me, and it was very specific wording last time, is we will need a motion to grant whatever, whatever, and whatever. And, and I say it, that was said often.
The money thing, the authentication, he just talked about it. He's going to have the...
Auditing officer.
The auditing officer.
Well, he's, he's the alternate now, so he's, he can do it in my place anyway. So all auditing, nothing gets missed there, even if he wasn't going to be the executive director, he's still the auditing officer. And there's separation between Joanne, who does the books and everything right now, to whenever she possibly leaves in the next few months. Julie's already been trained on everything, so...
Could we ask, so I know that there was very specific language from the attorney when we appointed an interim director, can we just, can we just cross check that, to make sure we're not missing anything?
Like when you appointed Erica? Let me look that, I'll look to find out where that is.
The wording was handed to me, and I, seriously, whereas like, it has to, our attorney said it has to include this, just to be sure that our bases are covered, before, so that if we need to have a quick special meeting with a quorum to do that, that we do that, or whatever.
Yeah, no, good point. Yes, I'd forgotten that.
Yeah, I just remembered, because I was going through, no one needs to hear this, but I'm just kidding. Anyway, I was going through like spring cleaning or whatever, and I found a piece of paper, where I was like, "Oh," literally, it was, "This is your motion." All right. Great.
I'll, I'll look back through all the resolutions, because it would have been a resolution that you did for her, wouldn't it?
I think so.
And it would have been in 15, in early 15, so I'll look back and find it.
Either a resolution or a motion attached to a meeting.
Yeah, well, I, I know which meeting it was in, too, because we've, we've got those, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll get that out.
And I was keeping meticulous records, so it's probably in the minutes of the meeting, too.
You heard yourself patting yourself, go back over there.
Anal, anal minutes, that nobody wants to read. Moving along, please.
So, the director of maintenance of facilities, any comments from the board on the separation of duties? We, we talked about the auditing officer, and that keeps the separation there. And once again, we'll check these with the lawyer, and stop.
From an audit perspective, the auditing officer is the only thing that there needs to be a separation. So he reviews whatever Joanne does. That's, that's the only thing that really needs a separation of powers, or so to speak.
Any questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Holly?
No. I, I didn't see any problems with any of them.
Commissioner Harden?
No.
Looks clear.
Looks good.
No, but before I forget, can, can, can I ask, like, I, I don't know what your plan is for your last day, but can we take you to lunch, or drinks, or something? I, I don't know if you have another plan.
It's not the 15th of March, yes.
I was like, why would it be, but can, I would like, I would like to do that.
Yeah, it's March.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Okay, I didn't know if you had plans, and I certainly don't want to interrupt this, but I would, I would like to do that on the 31st.
Oh, our plans involve bars.
Okay, well, then, I'm in the club. I, I don't know if, if, you know, if anyone else can make it, but I would certainly like to do that, and I, if anyone else can.
Technically, Saturday week is my last day, but Friday's really the last work day.
You pick, how about, how about you pick the day, you know, you pick the day. So you pick, you pick when, and you pick where, and, and...
I'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I knew I'd forget by the end of the meeting.
Give yourself way too much credit. So, no, no comments on that, we'll go, we're going to check the legal wording, so there's no sense in making a motion, until we ensure we put the correct legal wording, and how we're going to...
Of the appointment?
Of the appointment, that's correct. All right.
I will work to have that to you guys tomorrow.
Thank you. I put date in here, date of the May meeting, so...
Oh, right, I'm just, the...
Moving the May 24th meeting to the 17th.
May 24th, this doesn't work for me, we no longer are tied, because we don't get stuff from the county, is my understanding.
Everything, nothing changed, I still make a weekly trip down there to take vouchers and pick up stuff from the rest of this treasury.
Well, anyway.
But, but it's so small now, I think, one...
You can deal with it.
Even if it doesn't get here in time, and she can't do everything she has to do to it before it gets presented, she can at least give you the information, and then...
This, I'm just asking, if no one else has a problem with that, I would like to move it to the 17th.
I can deal with that. I, I don't have a problem that I know of, maybe we could ask the people preparing the background, if they have a problem with it.
Julie, would you be able, would you have any issues with the 17th instead of the 24th? Okay. Matt, you good with that? Okay. All right, so...
Thank you.
We'll move the meeting for May from the 24th to the 17th.
Appreciate it.
New business, redistricting. Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Yeah, this is something I had asked to have added, just something to look at it, you know. You know, in talking with the mayor, or, you know, current or past county commissioners, Island Drans, et cetera. It, it seems to be the number one recommendation that a lot of them jump on, going off of their past experiences. I know when we had our meeting with the, all the professionals there at City Hall, it came up with a few of them as well. Talked with Sheila Kreider, just briefly, talked with Secretary of State briefly. It is, it is something that we would, our lawyer needs to, i- if the board decides to ask our lawyer, we, we, we need to at least learn what the process is, and what the timelines would be, how soon it would need to be done, et cetera. A couple of the reasons for, for going that route would be, you know, in O'Carver city limits, for instance, I think we had 76, 77% support, I think it was, almost 80%. But you got up to the Northwood Beach precincts 1, 2, and 3, closest to the bridge, and as close to Ana Cortes as they are, though, Carver pool may be closer. It drops down close to 50%. And when you need that 60% super majority, it seems to be a deal breaker. Roughly, the math was, if you were to shave off Northwood Beach precincts 1, 2, and 3, for instance, you would have to ask for 22 cents per thousand, as opposed to 17, to get the same amount of money that you would at 17. But the biggest thing is, if it's something that the board wants to determine the process of, at least, I would, I would hope that our lawyer could pretty quickly, at least, answer what the process is, and what he thinks it would take. But that was why I had asked to have it added, because it had been recommended by a lot of professional political people.
Discussion.
Well, I'm trying to figure out exactly what the three north districts are, the 1, 2, 3?
Correct. Yes. Says right after. Northwood Beach 03, Northwood Beach 02. Okay. Northwood Beach 04.
My eyes are old.
More experience.
I, I think I had, well, I know I had this originally, I got it from the county assessor. And then, I made it, I gave Commissioner Hoffmeyer the color copy. I will look for the color copy in my email, because I know I...
I have the color copy in my other vehicle, as well.
Well, you have it, right. But I can email everyone the color copy.
Well, you can, you can pull it up online, the assessor's, I found it.
You found this?
Awesome.
It's online. It's, it's, no, it's online with the Island County Assessor's Office. And, anyway, it's online, and you can find it, and you can zoom in, so you can see the lines and stuff, and you can see what it was back in 2011, and what it is now, and what it was before 2011, the one election before that.
I think of it, I definitely would like to figure out what type of timeline we're on, and whether it's an easy process or an expensive one, and go from there. And I don't think we're ready to make any, any decisions other than that, possibly.
Here's what I think, I've been a taxpayer of this district my whole adult life. I'm in District 1. So no, you are not taking away my pool and my district from me. And I, and I, you're in District 3, you, I think, are in District 2, maybe?
No, I don't know, but no.
So you've got commissioners, and you are not going to disenfranchise all those people that have been paying the taxes all these years, just, I'm just sorry, you're, I think it's, it's a nonstarter, to me.
Is there, I mean, the question is, is there any other way to get to 60, and I hope there is?
Have a responsible fiscal policy. Have a, a board that makes good decisions about the money, that the taxpayers have given to us.
And have the commissioners all united. I mean, even if we don't agree, we can still be united.
Yep.
I, I would hate to see all that, all that, those people locked off myself, because I know there's a lot of, a lot of people that I know that are in those districts, and...
You're in that district.
Yeah.
That's you over here, isn't it?
I'm over here, but I'm not sure where I am, if I'm here or here, you know.
Okay.
Because I'm further south.
Oh, maybe.
Where are you, where are you at?
I am...
Because you said you're Hasty Lake, right?
Oh, I'm north of Hasty Lake, I am in District 3, I live right on the water, well, the water right here.
Yeah, okay, well, that's probably, that's where I live, too, then.
Yeah. Right around the corner.
Yeah, and I, I feel, I mean, I feel like this is my pool. 2. Yeah, I mean, but I, you know, we can see what everybody thinks. I think we can reach the 60 if we get started earlier, which I think we're already starting on, you know, doing things to get the levy passed, I mean, that's, that's basic. And we're also trying to raise money, so that we can, I, I mean, I would love to open earlier, but I don't know if it's even feasible, you know, given the, the stage we're at. But I do think that there, there is a lot of good atmosphere going on, as far as, from the community. And, you know, from the people that, in our committee has a good attitude, and are, are working hard. And, you know, we're, we can't do everything, because first of all, I mean, if the commissioners could say, "Well, we can just spend thousands of dollars." But I know that's, we're really dependent on the foundation for what we do.
I'm going to say this, if I look at this proposal right now, and just hearing what the other board members are saying, and looking at, just at the cost of redistricting this year, you're going to have to run legal costs, plus two elections, because you have to run the levy. Then you have to run a redistricting election.
Is that part of the process?
I don't know, I'm going to assume, there's got to be some legal voice for...
You're disenfranchising, and you can't just do it.
And even if you don't have to run, even if lawyers come back and say, "We don't have to run an election to redistrict," you will then have to run an election for four board members, because four of us will no longer live in the district and can no longer serve on the board, which means you won't have a quorum to go forward. And the district will go back to the county, and the county can close the door and do what they want with it. So we could redistrict, but then it would be up to the county commissioners, and now it's to us. So, I, I don't think, I ran an election, albeit unopposed, to walk away willingly, without going down, you know, fighting for, to open the doors back up, which I think we're all here for, so, I, I understand the merit, I do understand the merit. Especially since we passed so, we passed highly, inside the city, there's city limits. And I know there's other factors, looking at election years and so on, and how well we're going to do. Looking at the foundation and the goodwill, and I think if we keep that going forward, I don't know if now would be the right time to do this. That's my opinion. Commissioner Singleton?
I think that our best chance of success, not just for passing a levy, but for the future of the district, is to fix the problems. And I think there are many, many people involved in doing that right now. So I think we're on that road, and I think that, I think it's smarter to treat the problem than the symptom. Because I think, I think that in some cases, the, the result of the vote is a symptom of a different problem, and I think we're in the process of fixing the problem. And so I think if we focus on fixing the problem, I think that we will, I believe that we will be okay. So I don't think that this is, I don't value this activity.
I think it would create a lot of hate and discontent and dissension, that we absolutely do not need right now.
For sure.
I definitely agree with, with a lot of what's been said. I think, like I said, being that the mayor, every city council member, a county commissioner or two, I think being that they all, that was, that was the first thing they all jumped on. So I think it's important for them to see that we've had this conversation, and I would think that they would agree with a lot of what they've heard as well. And back to what Wendy said, you know, treating the symptom as opposed to a problem, I think it was. I think she's right, you know, and I think, I think you look to the last, the last four MNO levies we've passed have been on odd election years, you know, and talking to those same people that have made a career out of running for political offices, et cetera, you know, running school levies, et cetera. You know, the schools only need 50% to, to pass their levies, and Coval and O'Carver both ran their last three or four levies in February, as opposed to November. But then you get this year and a, and a congressional year. You know, the last, for the last 24 years, we've ran on odd years. Now we're going to be running on a congressional year. And I guess, is that a symptom or a problem? But most of those people that have been in politics on Whitby Island for their whole life, most of their advice is, you can expect whatever, whatever support you've got on a levy... whatever, whatever support you've got on a levy, it typically comes down about 10% on a congressional year. So maybe it's part of a different conversation, but as we get closer, maybe that's something we look at, is there a different, is there a better time during the levy? I don't know the answers.
No further discussion on the redistricting. We're going to look at the mission statement next month, I'll send that out. As we talked about, staff reports. Director, anything, nothing?
Any questions?
Any questions on the staff reports? Commissioner Hofmeyer?
I thought we were past staff reports, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
The great start with the new website.
Have you seen it?
I have seen it, and it's lovely, it really is. So I don't know, I'm just, I'm looking everywhere so that I can...
Coming all the way.
Okay, that's all right. Just going to look at everyone.
It's part of the maintenance.
It's all that. Come on, and only eight hours a week, really? No.
Yeah, I beat it out of the sled jam, really.
No, it's really nice. I think it's great. So, you know, I'm sure, you know, I think, I think there are lots of placeholders for information that I think are going to go a long way with the public, for people who actually do care about the information, or people who even ask us, and then it feels like a long way to get them information. You know what I mean? Like instead of, oh, that's on our website. So it's lovely. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Main pool pump, which do you recommend?
Which do I recommend?
Yeah.
I would recommend probably the, yeah, unfortunately, it'd be a more expensive option because it is actually made with...
Is that the new pump or the rebuilt kit?
That's a rebuilt kit.
Okay.
Yeah, new pump is about $4,000.
That's what you said, but I wanted to be sure. So do we need to approve that or...
No, but I think our current path is, we're going to keep running it when we have to run it, and as long as it can cycle the pool within a certain parameter, there's enough volume flow through there, we're going to try and let it run until it just fails. So we don't spend, and if it makes it through eight, you know, 12 more months doing that, then when we have the money, it probably will be a $4,000, $5,000, buy another one of those and put it in.
Okay. I noticed on several places it says, we're going to, we'll plan for that in the 2017 budget.
Let me check that. I know what you're talking about, on the maintenance one?
It's on the maintenance plan.
Yeah. That's because if there was no change, we just really didn't, we'll fix that for next month. We'll make sure.
Anything else?
That's just for maintenance.
No? Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Not on staff reports, but I do have something that everybody else is...
Okay. And I have one thing on staff reports, I thought in light of everything that you brought to us this month, it's amazing that still in bold at the end of the staff report is still the happiest place in the world.
Oh.
Thank you. Says volumes about the world values.
Except, I think that was another thing you just forgot to, like...
Update?
Yeah.
What would we say, the most emptiest place in the world?
It's depressing in here during the day.
Oh, it is. It is. At least we get sunlight.
Yeah.
So that's it for staff reports. No employee of the month, no public comment. Final comments of the Board?
Yeah. Permission to jump slightly out of order, I suppose.
Commissioner Hofmeyer?
And I think it's within our right, though. Seeing that there is no employee of the month, I would like to make a motion that the Executive Director, Steve McHasten, we made the employee of the month.
I have a motion to make our Executive Director, for his final month here, the employee of the month. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second, discussion.
Do I have to write it up?
Only if you want to take it with you.
I was going to say no, but now, yes.
Yes, and you have to put one up front.
Agreed.
Make it all a motion.
Hold on. Hold on. Discussion.
That's all we're doing.
Going down.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.